We'll call Scottsboro City Council Meeting, Monday, June 13th. Order, application given by Gary Stewart. My pleasure, allegiance, and by Ray Miller.
Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for another beautiful day you've given us. We thank you for the many blessings you've given us. We ask now that you'll watch over these proceedings, and they'll be acceptable on your side. We ask that you watch over the citizens and employees of Scottsboro as they go about their daily lives, watch over our military, bring them home safely to their families. Guard God and direct us so in the end we're not under thee. In Jesus' name. Amen.
My pleasure, allegiance, to the life of the United States of America, into the Republic, which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's fill this with a real call, please.
Mr. Snare?
Here.
Mr. Wallingsford?
Here.
Mr. Gary Stewart?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Patrick Stewart?
Here.
We'll go to the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
No motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Not a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll post a no. We'll go to approval of previous minutes from May 23rd, 2016. Do I have a motion to approve the previous minutes from May 23rd, 2016?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? I will vote on favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll post a no. There is no business, or there is new business. First item is Abby Gentry Benson, BB Combridge. Abby, come forward, please.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to thank y'all for allowing me to speak, and several things have been covered, and I'll try to make it as brief as possible. The first thing I was gonna bring to your attention is, I know we're not here about the clock, but my daddy is. He served 36 years as pro that judge worked on that clock. And when he got, you know, old, the clock was old, and a business owner here, daddy went to them, and he donated $10,000, and bought him over for the courthouse clock. So, we all enjoy that every day, that we here at Rade, and for 10 years now that he's been gone. So, I kinda look at it like the bridge deserves a second look, hopefully, and we know it's -- that the bridge is, we know it is gone, but there are still parts left that we could capitalize on, or use. I've been to see John Cooper twice, Mr. Cooper, the outback director, and anyway, had several conversations with him about trying to save these last two sections. This next Wednesday, they're gonna blow up the next two trusses, and then Friday are the last two trusses. The last two trusses is what I'm hoping we can save. The bridge is still in great shape, I mean, as far as those trusses. I've been to the demolition position site, talked to the owner of the company there, and his suggestion was if we were gonna keep any of it, to keep those last two trusses that are on the land side, because it would give you more stability. That, the possibility, you know, to raise money, I've been on the phone today with people in Chattanooga about the bridge there, and the Bonner Street Bridge sat vacant for over almost 10 years, because they didn't have enough money to big and tear it down. And citizens got on board, and started raising money. And how they raised money, they had people buy timbers for, there's a picture in there of the, they had sold them with nameplates. So, everybody, they said, you know, $100 each your nameplate, and they put it on the bridge. So, you know, ten people do a hundred, I mean, $100, that's, you know, $1,000. And somebody may wanna get five, somebody might wanna get $5,000, we don't know. Or if somebody wants to get, you know, buy timber in honor of a family member, then we can, I'm already probably got, you said, we didn't want to buy timber to floor the existing bridge, and that's that first picture that doesn't have the flooring anymore where the sunset is. So, we can have that, you know, that, the timbers donated, and, you know, even good offense, just stop it, and everybody kinda just stop and catch their breath, see what we can do, because this bridge has been important to all of us in our city, in our county, when there weren't fire departments, police out on the mountain. That bridge was the roadway to get to anybody in need. When our, all of our military crossed that bridge, wanted to fight even when it took out the Germans in World War II, and it's been there that long. So, my first wish, and what I'm hoping to do, is keep it where it is, where it was built. You would come off of, and you would have some maneuvering, I figure, to come off the bridge, and there's enough room, there's a roadway there where the old road bed is, come off there and turn back and have an observation, like it'd be become our observation deck. And then people could watch the sunset, could fish off of it, have picnic table, benches, people can go drop there and get a happy meal, and go watch the sunset with their children, or grandparents, whatever. It could also be handicap accessible, pull your van up there, if you rent a wheelchair, unload, go out there and watch the sunset, and that's a plus. So, that's the, my, the cheapest I think, we could, you know, just start fundraising and asking for donations, and I'm bored for whatever, and I'm ready to, ready to, ready to help, you know, provide whatever I need to do to help save this. Another option is on the Scottsboro side, I've been with the demolition, Ray Watson, who owns the company, United Demolition, and he suggested, when I first went out there, on the Scottsboro side, there was concrete, there were a lot of letter H's. He was suggesting take them down a little bit, and do a fishing pier. So, they're there, they're in, they're in the, you know, soil, they're, they're stable. So, it won't be right now, it may not be in a year from now. We may have a, in 2020, have a great dedication, have a fishing pier, 10 years from now, maybe a restaurant, a hotel, but if they're gone, they're gone, you know, and to try to preserve something now, to stop the demolition on Friday, is, I guess, the main thing we need to do. And I talked to Mr. Cooper, he said, "If you go, you go to the city." And he said, "Get a letter from the city saying, 'They are interested in preserving this part of the bridge,' then we'll go from there." So, that's the last word I had from him. And I just think that river is beautiful out there, and it's, you know, it deserves a second look, to try to figure out, and we could all work together to figure out a solution. There is a solution, we just gotta work together to make it. It could be really great, you know, eventually, there may be shocks out there, you know, I mean, there's lots of things in the future that it could be, instead of it going, being melted down somewhere. Those rivets in that bridge are all hand done, they poured them on a boat, hot steel, melted steel, poured them in a mold, tossed them up in the air, somebody on that bridge called them, put them in water, and throw them in the bridge to make that piece by piece. So, it's a work of art, and I'm a history person, and an antique person, obviously, but, you know, I just hate to see it, just, when I moved a picture of it at the scrapyard, I've been up there two, three times. I've been everywhere, trying to talk to everybody. But, you know, it just deserves, it just deserves to have something, some part of it kept, and then we'll figure out what we can do, you know, have some different ideas, and, you know, or another possible, the third option, there is a, that will go launching place across the river, and it, I mean, I guess, if we could have access to that, that would be the last option, I think, but you could build a pier from there over to the BB Combridge observation deck, and it's like two tenths of a mile, a little bit less, I kinda did disturb him. But, I think if we all work together, figure out what to do, be with the engineers, and see if we can, if they come off that bridge, and just have a blinking light saying, you know, it'd become our observation deck, everybody be, you can be aware of it. Most of the time, people are gonna be sunset, or Saturday or Sunday, it's not gonna be in high traffic the time of day, you know, and we can just come up there, and you turn around, I practiced a bunch of it, and tried to figure it out, so. Anyway, I guess that's all. Oh, and then the timbers, I've researched those, and we can get some timbers that are called Braveheart, I don't know, but they're, they will never rot, and they're decay resistant. So, you know, if you, like, I would buy one in honor of my daddy and my mom, I might buy two, so and so might buy one, and just have people, you know, dedicate, you know, donate money to, in honor of someone. It's just like they did at the papers at the gazebo, I bought two of those, and they did the gazebo. So, we may have, after we get the bottom of the bridge, the decking back, then we can start with papers, sell papers, and do four, fifty times we have to, a little bit more, and just kinda, it could be really nice. And I just, I just have a vision, you know, I can see picnic tables out there, and people enjoying for years to come, and we're all gone, you know, that bridge is, that bridge is gonna stay, so. Anyway, do you have any questions?
Uh, Ms. Benson, I, when you came to my house to speak with me about this, you and I had the discussion that I could not see how Aldott would ever, and I will repeat, ever allow the traffic to be diverted to the area that you're talking about. I did have occasion over the weekend to speak with Mr. Cooper, and he confirmed that he did tell you that if you got a letter from the council and the mayor, that he would turn it over to his engineers, but he said, "Tony, my engineers are never going to let that happen." And so, we had a conversation about realistic expectations also. So, when we started conversations two years ago about the bridge, my recommendation was at that time, to research efforts to preserve the heritage of the bridge, and the story of the bridge. And the response at that time was if we can't save the whole bridge, we have no interest in doing anything else. That doesn't leave a whole lot of room for compromise. And I think we can see how far those efforts went. So, I, for one, think that any effort to try to leave a span in place on the other side of the, on the other side of the river, will be a futile, a futile effort. I've had conversations with Mr. Stewart and some other councilmen, I, and certainly in support of, as I say, saving the heritage of the bridge and being able to tell the story, but if your effort is going to be in trying to leave a span of the bridge in place on the other side of the river, I think a span could have been left in place this side, but we're a little late for that. So, I just don't think that we'll, we would be able to be productive in that, in that effort. So, I, for one, Mr. President, would support researching the opportunity to salvage a portion of the bridge, be able to utilize it in some productive manner, at some point in the future.
Did he, like, if we...
And you will, you will be glad to know that he definitely remembers who you are.
Twice.
He's a little offended you didn't help him spray his tomatoes when you went to the yard and traffic there.
A little bit of that first, but I just knew I had to get to him, and I thought, "I can't wait on the middleman, because this is fixin', this is urgent." But he was very nice, and he remembered, you know, my daddy, he said, "Do you remember, you remember Judge Gentry?" And he said, "Yeah," and he said, "He saved that clock," and we listened, talking about him and Montgomery, I said, "Well, I'm here to save the bridge," but, anyway. Would the engineers, would you think it would be possible to, if they came off with a turning, I mean, a turnoff, and then go out with the land a little bit, possibly? Because it's the same traffic that's at Triple R, at the liquor store, there's no turnoff there, there's no veering off, it's the same traffic going through there.
Like, there's a deceleration lane there, you put them off the state?
Well, it's just on the side, I don't know.
It's, it's a pretty sharp U-turn that you have to take.
And, I mean, whatever, I mean, you know, to take a whole truss and save it is an endeavor, like, we can talk to him about lowering that truss, and hauling it off, you know, somewhere we could have, even at county park, you know, if it's not gonna be on the water, maybe we could save a part of it. My initial thing is trying to save the entrance. That was what I've been out there, trying to save that entrance, and then last Friday, when they blew it, and there's a picture of that entrance, it's, it's not there, I mean, it's already, I mean, it's blown up, so, the demolition welders, the, they told me that we tried to save part of it, and, you know, it could be that, you know, we can save part of it and we put it somewhere else, it's just gonna, a foot of that bridge weighs 100 pounds. So, it's just, you know, it's just a hard, I mean, it's five feet, it's 500 pounds, it's a lot. But, if, if you think that he would, if we could just stop the demolition, you know, and maybe we could take that last section and put it somewhere else, but Friday will be, you know, the demolition's gonna be Friday, so it's possible that they're gonna handcuff that last section, we can maybe transfer it, I've got friends that have 18 welders that have volunteered, I've got welders that have volunteered, to try to put it somewhere else, and maybe the far, I've talked to the garden club, if they could, if they could put, you know, flowers, and the boys got projects, could do, you know, okay, maybe it'd just be something to save to them.
Do you have anything else?
So, basically, I guess it's just y'all, just to vote to see if we can work together to save a portion of it before they're, you know, destroy it privately.
To stop the demolition.
And figure out what to do, what to do with it. And the demolition company will be here till July, so maybe if we can't, you know, if we can stop it, maybe we can figure out what we can do.
I mean, may I ask a question?
Yes.
You said a foot is 100 pounds.
Mm-hmm.
San Jose is 100 pounds. That bridge has got to be, what, what's a foot, what are you considering, foot?
Well, I guess we put up these beams, and you told me that part you want to save would be the lattice, that's the, that's the historical part of it, is the lattice, is exactly. So, maybe we can save...
Not the whole bridge, a foot is 100 pounds?
No, no, I think, I think just a section, you know, like the, you know, the, I guess some of these side rails or something, I guess that could be. Because when you go out there, and you look at it, I mean, it's, I see it doable, but it may not be, unless you did add some, you know, some, some of the little road to turn around back there, but. Do you think if we met with the engineers, that they would have a suggestion on how to make that?
I'm sorry, I have a question.
I said, "Do you think if we met with them, if we could stop it, and then met with the engineers, maybe, just to see what they would say?"
It's at a point, I believe now, where there is, that's what happened. Unless anyone else on here thinks that, without a vote, to vote on it, I don't see that we need a vote.
I'm just looking at the photo that Abby provided, the aerial photo, and it's like what Patrick and Tony have said, I don't see any way that you can possibly do a safe turnabout, say the engineers being able to allow.
Well, you have to go off, and you have to go off there, and then you'd have to, you know, dredge out, or build a little, I mean, probably some of that rock that was on the, the aggregate concrete that was on the bridge has piled up out there, pile it up, and then have a bridge to come back, because it's, it's wider than this frame.
So, now, Ms. Benson, you're talking about getting TBA Water Authority involved, and do you think the engineers at Aldott are tough to deal with, the problem at TBA? I hate to keep saying this, I said...
I know, I understand.
I said it 20 times about you at my house, with realistic expectations.
And TBA, I mean, TBA approves boat docks and other things, I mean, I look at it, it is possible, it might, might not be...
But the timeline is, is, is over.
I think there's chances to try to acquire a section or a piece or something, and do something with that, whatever that ends up being, but I just, I keep looking at this, trying to make it work, and I don't see that Aldott and TBA are, with the time that we're given and the resources, I don't know if that's feasible.
Well, I'm just trying to save for them, you know, all that can melt it down, and, you know, just to save some part of it. Okay.
Thank you.
Your turn.
We'll go to item number two, the public hearing for the alcohol license, Stephen Chikbury, doing business as bootleggers. I'm gonna do the investigative report, Ms. Benson, please.
The applicant is Stephen Chikbury, legal business name Bootleggers Lounge LLC, top of license lounge class one, doing business as bootleggers, located at 3701 East Willow Street. The background investigation is under separate cover. There were two businesses surveyed with no objections, and there were no residences located within the 300-foot radius. The nearest church and school footage requirements were met, license application is in order, health inspection and zoning verification complies, and fire and building inspection, according to this, is pending, but this hasn't been out there as of last week, because the revenue officer was not at work today, so.
Thank you.
They could be in compliance at this point.
All right, so with that being said, this is time to pledge for a public hearing. Is there anyone here against this? Is anyone here against this? Is anyone here for this? So close, a public hearing. So, that, do I have a motion to approve the alcohol license pending the final investigation for Stephen Chikbury, doing business as bootleggers?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll post a no. Next item is consider approval of capital project for the Fire, Police, Streets, Sanitation, Leave what we have in front of us, give us four.
Mr. President, I provided you an all cut proposal, but what has been, you know, what was in the packet, after talking with department heads, Chief Dahl reported that he had approximately 36,000, Chief Dahl, is that properly accurate, in his, in his account? I spoke with, with the fire chief, they have a little over 70,000 in their account, which they have plans for, I understand. As we talked at the work session. I'm still having difficulty finding a need for the UTB and SCID plate at this time. I also think that there are some questions about this software package, or I should say website service, proposed for the accounting at the Recreation Department. I would propose that those two sections be delayed at this time, and that money be shifted over to pay for the fourth vehicle for the police department. That would make, I think you have a copy in your packet, that would mean that we would be looking at four Chevy Tahoe's for the police department, that are approximately $160,000. That would fulfill all the requests for the fire department, other than the UTB unit, for a dollar amount of $57,500. The Recreation Department, their software would be put on hold, and then the Street Department for residential garbage cans, 40-yard roll-offs, two bushhogs, and some assorted tools, a figure of $58,000. That would bring a total capital improvement outlay immediately of $275,500. And I would make a motion that, that be the capital project distribution that we would have.
Okay, we have a motion. For how much, Tony hands are?
Total of $275,500.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we need to do these separately, or just roll them all in one? Okay. As, as, a second, as Tony makes a motion.
Any other discussion? We give a total.
Would be attached, cover the Tony hands?
If there's no other discussion, we'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll post a no. Go to item number four, consider resolution, tap resolution. We covered that in the work session last week. Ms. Cameron, anyone?
This is a transportation alternative project funded, partially funded by the State Highway Administration, or the Federal Highway Administration. This authorizes the mayor to apply, or to enter into agreement with the state. This has to do with the area one block off the square, as opposed to on the square project.
Thank you. So, with that, do I have a motion to consider a resolution, the tab resolution?
Sure.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll post a no. Next item is consider a resolution, CDVG, 2016 drainage project. Believe this one is allowing us to apply for the drain.
That's correct.
So, with that, do I have a motion to consider a resolution for the drainage project?
Motion.
Second. Second. Any discussion? Not a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll post a no. Next item is consider the cattle logging contract. We've discussed this a couple times.
Mr. President, I gave my, I gave a copy of the report from the Alabama Forestry Commission agent, that went out with me to the property last week at the work session. I would recommend that we table this, put it on next week's work session, so that the forestry agent can be available and answer any questions that the council might have.
Okay, I have a motion to table this, cattle logging contract. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Do I have a second? So, we have a second, any discussion? Not a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item is consider proposal for the Park City Bridge design. Josh, any sense of that?
You should have in your packet a proposal from a land engineer, Paul Payne, to do the design work for the Park City Bridge. As you all know, it's been posted by the state in 2013 at five tons, and it's in pre-core condition. So, that's proposal to do the bridge design in each of your locations.
I have reviewed the document, and it's in order.
Any questions for Josh, unless standing up here? So, with that, do I have a motion to consider the proposal for Park City Bridge design?
Make the motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Cameron, I know that the mayor and Mr. Wheeler are here, but is it possible to use the plan for service for the project, or pull that inside? but is it possible to use, uh, the plan for the service road project, or, or that inside?
Yes.
So, if we did, the, uh, okay.
The, the, the agreement is totaled, it's month sum, twenty thousand.
So.
Mr. Mayor, it's twenty-four, five. I'm sorry, yes, twenty thousand for the limited areas, and, uh, then an additional forty-five hundred for the geotechnical corners.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll vote on paper, say aye.
Aye.
I'll say no. We'll go to reports, the mayor is out of town. Uh, Ms. Wallensford?
Uh, I don't know anything, really, I just appreciate everybody coming out tonight, thank you for your time.
Ms. Smith?
Hello.
Ms. Stewart?
I don't have anything tonight.
Ms. Miller?
Uh, just like to see, since, after discussing the options of the bridge, if there's anything that perhaps the city can look at in terms of, uh, locating or relocating a piece of that, if it's possible. I'm not sure what we need to do to, to look into that officially. That's all I have.
Thank you. Um, well, with that being said, I went out last week, and, um, actually met with, um, Kelvin Stewart, and I met with him as a private citizen, um, and discussed those options as far as maybe salvaging just a piece in the entrance of the bridge. I know it's been a, a long course of action with the Friends of Bibi Cumber Bridge and, um, the Cumber Bridge Foundation, um, trying to save the whole entity, and it just wasn't feasible. Um, the money wasn't there, and the, the timeline was, was closing in, the window opportunity. And Abby, uh, actually had, uh, been back there in the mayor's office, and had discussed, uh, several options on trying to save some portions of the bridge or whatever. But after talking with Kelvin, um, he got with his supervisor, and, um, he called me today. I went back down there and met with them, um, uh, sometime this afternoon, and, uh, again reiterated to them that I was not representing the city of Scottsboro, that I represent myself as a private citizen. And they are going to give the city of Scottsboro, um, the, it was the north entrance of Bibi Cumber Bridge. And so, um, what I would like to do is, um, form a committee and keep that portion, um, of the Bibi Cumber Bridge opening, the gateway or whatever, as a memorial. And I'd like to form a committee with Brent Miller and Tony Wallensford. Um, we do have transportation, um, I do have a, uh, trucking company that I've spoken with that will move the entrance wherever we need it to be moved to, um, without any charge. Um, so, I just want to thank everybody that had tried to save the bridge. There was a valiant effort, but they had a passion, it's great. Um, it just, the money wasn't there, and there was a lot of, um, I could go on and on. Basically, the bottom line is that we have a portion of it, and I think we need to be happy with what we got.
That's what they told me.
And so. And I need to have to make sure to the, uh, to the committee as well. Um, we need to make sure that we move pretty quick. Um, they would like for this piece to be moved within, uh, before July the fourth. So, I know that, again, the window of opportunity, we don't have to decide what we want to do with it, but just to get it moved from where it is right now. But Abby, I applaud you for, for everything that you've done over the past couple of weeks.
You're being pretty quiet, man. For a change. But you said you went and talked with them as an individual, yet they gave it to the city. How did they come about giving it to the city without anybody asking?
I've asked.
Uh, no, because you don't really count as far as the city of Scottsboro, if you will.
I didn't represent myself as a...
I know, I, I know, I, I guess that's my question is, and I'm not saying I'm against what you're talking about, but you said, they said, they gave it to the city, they decided to give it to the city.
I think the thing is they're willing to give it to the city.
I thought you said they gave it to the city.
No, they wouldn't, I thought that's what you said. But that's why I want to require actual, require the city council ultimately, after there's a committee before.
Well, I just wanted to carry that, you know. We, we talked this thing for a long, long time, and here we go again. And I guess my, my concern is, where's the money gonna come from?
There is no money.
I know that.
In my...
They can move it for free.
Yes, the trucking company said they would move it for free.
Okay. I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn? Show vote. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote on paper, say aye.
Aye.